Committee meetings for Charleston County Council. I'm Herb Sasse, the chairman. To my left is Reverend Kyler Middleton, Mr. Brentley Moody, Councilman Moody, Councilman Darby, Councilman Kibrowski, our new, one of our two new additions, Mr. Pryor, and, excuse me, Joe Boykin and Jenny Honeycutt. Rob Wurman has an excused absence this evening. Thank you. First order of business, Mr. Pryor, administration rules, policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of this committee is Joe Boykin, Jenny Honeycutt, and Reverend Middleton. Item number one is the minutes of May 19th, 2022.
Second.
Deletions or additions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. I think on two, this is an amendment to our rules to allow our housing committee, I believe it is.
Public Safety and Human Resources to be standing committees.
To be standing committees. So we talked about this, I believe, before, and so now it's before us, before a vote so it can get out of committee. Are we just gonna talk now?
No, this is just for discussion today, and it'll come back on the 26th for a vote.
All right, excuse me. So any members of council, if you want to chime in, if you're not on the committee, welcome to do so. But I think, you know, we were talking about going to all items committee as a whole.
Right.
You know, because that way we can make decisions and go straight to, you know, finance versus coming here, going to finance, and then coming back. So if anybody's open, I'm open to that as well.
So this, this proposal is not to make it committees of the whole, it's just to make it standing committees.
Standing committees.
Standing committees. So like you said, the items won't have to be voted on in those committees and then go to finance. They'll just be able to be voted on in those committees and then go straight to county council.
Right.
I am, you know, also, based on what Chairman Pryor of this committee just said, all of the committees, I think I've made this appeal a couple of years ago, because when we look at the work per committee, all of us are kind of parsed out to various committees. All the committees are consequential as it relates to the issues of the people of the county, and so all of them should be committees of the whole. And certainly I do understand that we don't want to short circuit going to finance and going directly to council. There could be some additional provisions that are in place, that things are just not voted upon carte blanche and sent straight up. But all of the committees, in my opinion, should be committees of the whole so that just like right now, only four people are actually on this committee, and only four people can vote, and then we have-
And the chairman, the chairman can-
And the chairman can vote, of course. But we still have the rest of the council persons who are always normally here during each of the committee meetings and should be able to officially contribute, you know, to the business of that committee.
Okay.
Well, we do allow every member to speak.
But we can't vote.
But we don't get to vote, you're right.
Right.
And we do get to vote when it goes to coun- when it goes to council, when it passes, goes through the committee.
But sometimes the vote is even more crucial in the committee, because if, if you can't get it out of the committee, then it won't go to council. And we've seen that happen, too.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, is there any, is there any particular, sorry.
That's right.
Is there any particular reason why we don't have committees of the whole on all these? Is there something in economy or?
No, we inherited this, and nobody ever did think about it until, you know, one day I started this, ax and crates, and people would be comfortable doing committees as a whole.
Well, I wouldn't disagree with Councilman Middleton. I, I, I think, you know, unless there's some reason someone can point out that we do this, not simply because we've always done it, but I, I don't see any, anything wrong with it being committees of the whole.
Anybody else? Mr. Kibrowski?
I just have a question. Sometimes the simple questions are important. This is my very first meeting, so explain to me the difference in, in procedure between the committee in a whole and the way, you know, it is now, and what difference it would be and how that would manifest itself.
Okay. Well, in committee as a whole, everyone gets to participate and everyone has a vote. In the standing committee, if it comes out of the standing committee, it would have to come to the regular committee for a, for a vote. But if it dies in that committee of a standing committee, it doesn't count. And so a lot of times you may have some good things you want to do, but if it doesn't come to full council in that committee, then you don't have a chance to do it. And I think, and the reason I say I wanted to do it back then was, it gives everybody a chance to participate, and it won't be like, well, I didn't have a chance to participate because I wasn't on the committee, I didn't understand it that well, and then it alleviates a lot of time, too, because like now, we, we can discuss it, but then it comes back again on the 29th, I think it was.
26.
26. We take a vote, and then they'll have to go to, to the council at the following Tuesday. But if, if we do a committee as a whole, it would eliminate that first step. And everybody still would get to participate, we just eliminate one step.
Having been the chairman, what is your experience and wisdom on the having, have the opportunity being the chairman of council? What is your assessment of how that works as opposed to a change?
Well, I will tell you my experience when I first came here. I think it was set up like this because if somebody didn't want something to come to council, it would die in committee. And that's the way it was, and so, and wisdom, that's why I asked that this be changed into be a committee as a whole, so everybody gets a vote. Like Reverend Middleton said, his citizens may want him to participate, but if it sinks in the, in the standing committee, it never comes to full council. He's just where I can explain it.
Does anybody else want to weigh in who has lived through this or just doesn't understand?
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm fairly indifferent about it, to be honest with you. I, I think even back to the time when I was first on, when Chairman Rawl was here, I think all of our council chairmen and chairpersons have done a good job of putting council members on committees where they have expressed an interest in, whether it be economic development or audit, or, you know, that some of the, maybe the attorneys amongst us are on something maybe that has more legal standing. But I think it evens out the workload as well, as it is. But again, I'm, I'm pretty indifferent about it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sasse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I like the smaller committees when we're, we're actually working on, working on details, because we, we can work on that and then bring it to the committee and, and, you know, ever since I've been here, we've, the chairman has always allowed everyone to speak, which I think is really good. And we, we try to fairly set the committees up like you did, and, and I tried to do the same. I think, and I think that's pretty fair, the way they do that. I prefer to keep the smaller committees, and you can concentrate on different things you want to, want to work on. But all of it comes to council, and I think the reason, I think the process today is that this is a rules policy committee, it comes out and it gets discussed, and no action can be-
No action can be taken today.
So the only, action can be taken, I think, on the 26th.
Yes, sir.
I think is when the next time is for that. So, so we do have some more time to think about it and talk about it.
Yes.
And that's, that's why that, that period of time is left in there in between those two, two meetings. So I think that's, I like the smaller committees personally, but-
All right, Jenny Honeycutt?
In between now and the 26th, Ms. Ham, can we get a copy of the state law addressing this type of function? I know we get to make our own rules, but anything that addresses how we create committees and what committees, I know the difference between standing and non-standing, ad hoc committees, yeah. If you wouldn't mind just circulating that to all council members so we have a better understanding of what's envisioned. Certainly, we'll take care of it.
Anybody else before we move on? All right, hearing none, that concludes this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. This is the Finance Committee agenda. Finance Committee call to order, approval of minutes for December 1, 2022.
Go move.
Second.
Any additional resolutions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, people. Resolutions, introduce-
Move for approval on A and B.
Is Mr. Bennett here?
That's right.
With the Charleston 250 Committee to make a presentation? Should we do it at the next? Okay, we are, okay.
He'll be back Tuesday, we get the resolution.
Great. Thanks for your invitation tonight and your willingness to, to invite us in. I'm Brett Bennett. I'm with the South Carolina American Revolution 250th Commission. I'm accompanied by Mr. Doug McIntyre, who's also with the South Carolina American Revolution 250th Commission. Hopefully, our request of you tonight will be among the most pleasurable things or tasks you'll have before you, but won't take a whole lot of your time, but I think it's important that we provide at least a summary background of what we're trying to achieve, not, not only for council, but also for members of the public. So a little bit of background, about six years ago, Congress established the U.S. Semi-Quintcentennial Commission, which extended to the formation of the America 250 Foundation with the purpose of commemorating the 250th anniversary of the founding of our, of our country. Importantly for this group, enabling legislation from Congress is not all that lengthy, but important for us in particular is that emphasis was placed on events and, to support events in locations of historical significance, particularly the four largest colonial cities. So that would be Boston, New York, Philadelphia, and Charleston, the only in the South. So the expectations for America 250 and Congress is there, there will be very memorable, large-scale programming for those four historic cities in particular. So just a couple of years after Congress established the America 250 Foundation, the South Carolina General Assembly established the South Carolina American Revolution Sestra Centennial Commission, and we've been in place now for about four or five years, been doing a range of things, all culminating to support programming around commemorative events across, across the state. Important for this particular body, I think, is that we're really supporting and promoting both research and cultural heritage tourism to tell South Carolina's stories from that era from multiple points of view. And, you know, whether those events or programs are true historical reenactments in, in focus or nature, or whether they be performing arts, visual arts, et cetera, but that's really what we are established to support and do. So in anticipation of a Charleston 250 campaign, and I'm using that, that word advisedly because we're really not seeking a commemoration on a particular date or a single event, but over the multi-year period that would commemorate the American Revolution. So last spring and summer, we put together a, an informal ideation session that was involving a wide range of community leaders, and fortunately, Dr. Middleton was gracious enough to spend his time with us one, one morning. As you might imagine, a, a wide range of ideas were suggested and discussed, whether it would be things like, things you would assume, parades and festivals, you know, receptions and, and formal events, culinary events, ideas were talked about, you know, tall ship, regatta, or flotilla, a whole range of events. But importantly, we talked a lot about how can we make such an event or a series of events unique to Charleston and South Carolina and our region, not copying what they may do in Philadelphia or mimicking what they may do in New York or other locations, but what really would define commemorative programming specific to our, our county and our region. So a lot to come, a lot of great ideas there and more to come, but it was wonderful to get that group together to establish a framework. And we've already had a range of informal discussions with some of the organizations that you would assume, so we're starting here with county government because we believe it's so important to have the support of this elected body, but also municipal governments, you know, the historic preservation organizations with which we're all familiar, performing arts organizations, you know, we've already had a lot of input, for example, from the Gilead Foundation, they're eager to have a, a wide range of, of programs and series that would commemorate aspects of the revolution, historical societies, churches, on down that, that lengthy list. And so not a week goes by that I don't field one or two phone calls or email messages from someone eager to sort of plug in and, and support the kind of programming that we're after over a multi-year period. So what we're here to do is request a, a resolution from Charleston County Council that, you know, would establish a Charleston 250 Committee to more, to pursue the, the kind of programming that I've already sort of outlined in a more structured, formal manner. Thus far, about three-fourths of all counties across the state have either established a committee or have secured a resolution from their county councils. The reason that the South Carolina Commission felt it was important to organize in the manner that we are around each county is because, you know, we thought, we think it very important that each community define their, their programming, their celebrations, their commemorative events, their educational programs as they think befits their community. And so, you know, it's not our intent to be a centralized planning organization, far from it. South Carolina American Revolution 250th really is in place to support community programs, and that's, that's what we're here to do here in Charleston. There's more complexity here in Charleston, it's a bigger metropolitan area, a lot of organizations that will be involved, et cetera, but still important that we focus on the county level more than necessarily state or regional levels. So that's what we're here, I think you have a draft resolution before you. We're eager for you to, to vote in favor, of course, of that draft, and to look forward to working with, with all of you in the coming months and years. So really, the takeaway, I think, from us is that, you know, our objectives are that our campaign over multi-year period will be, you know, meaningful and inspiring, and something that should be memorable for everybody in the community, no matter the age, no matter the ethnicity, no matter the interest. Some, some persons are more interested in history than others, but hopefully over a seven or eight-year period, no matter your age or your, your interest, you will have taken something away from a Charleston 250 commemoration. And also, you know, our programming should be very broad-based and, and inclusive, so something for everyone, as, as I've said. So any questions for me, thoughts or guidance? We're eager to have all.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I would simply like to say that I truly enjoyed the engagement with the American, well, with the Charleston 250 Committee. It's a very inclusive committee, and certainly look forward to all of the activities that will come as a result.
Thanks, Dr. Middleton, we very much appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Darby?
Oh, Mr. Darby?
I just hope that there's not too much of a revision of the American Revolution. I hope it is displayed as it was. Too often, sir, there's a revising thereof, if you understand my undercurrent here, so I just wish that it's not too much of a revision, sir.
I understand it very clearly, sir, and what you should know about the South Carolina Commission is we're spending a tremendous amount of time to tell the good, the bad, and the ugly. We use that terminology constantly, and it's, it's important, it's very important. In fact, a disproportionate share of our budget allocation thus far has been toward research and publications on untold stories, you know, whether it be from the African-American community, from the perspective of loyalists, from the perspective of Native Americans, you know, not just the, the wealthy men who wore powdered wigs.
We, we spent significant hours, and part of our discussion was to make certain that the entire story was told. And so it was a very inclusive conversation, very, we, very courageous conversations on many different levels, and they made that commitment during the meeting we had that day, and certainly I think that that persists.
Great, thank you very much.
Other questions?
I just want to thank you for your time, and I'm very excited about this, and we all come from different backgrounds, and as a grandson of immigrants who came to this country and it meant life or death, I'm also cognizant of what everybody said, but I'm also a believer in American exceptionalism, and from my perspective, I feel fortunate to be here and again kiss the ground of the country every day I'm alive. So I appreciate you doing this and, and to bring everything, but also the uniqueness and everything that's unfolded since then, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So we're in agreement to move this forward to the Finance Committee next week? Everyone say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposed? Okay, number 2B. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think we took A and B together.
A and B.
Thank you. Number three, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to move this forward, but I would like to, Mr. Armstrong, with these, item 3B.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with, but I do have a problem with some of the work that they do. We have been getting a lot of complaints when Sanders Brothers go in and do a road versus when Banks do a road.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, in the Rosemont community, you know, other places where they leave it on level and the water runs, and so I'm going to move this forward to money to you can get a chance to talk to them, and they can assure us that they're going to do much, a much better job, even when you come, when they come to, you know, preparing and laying down the cones and getting the roads right, you know, it seems to me that it's not as efficient as, as, as Banks does. So I would want you to relay that to them before Tuesday, and if we can come to some kind of agreement that they're going to do better work, I can support it, if not, then we, we have to do something different.
Yes, sir, we'll make the call.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Teddy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor. Was that, excuse me, was that A, 3A through?
The whole thing, yes, sir. A through E. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Is there any, any discussion, Mr. Moody?
Just headache, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Armstrong, what, typically we might have a map or a list of roads that are being done.
Yes, sir.
Can you follow up with that? I'd like to see that, what kind of general area, I mean, who knows, West Ash has been-
The map.
Did I miss that?
We'll send it to them.
Send it to me again, if you don't mind, if I missed it, I'm sorry.
Please send it to everyone, thank you.
And I'll, I'll just make a comment, too, and I've said this before, I, I do appreciate these funding grants, I mean, deodis is always good, the coroner, the sheriff, I mean, this is money that's out there, folks, we got to go grab it. This is money that Charleston County taxpayers don't have to fund because our, our folks are going out and funding this money, and I would challenge all of our departments to aggressively pursue grants. This is, this is big, and the same groups are always doing it, which I love, but we got to get everybody doing it, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
Did somebody second the motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ask. Item number four, general services directorate items.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is, thank you, is there any discussion about this? No discussion? Or, everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Number five, coroner's items.
Move for approval.
Aye.
A and B.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number six, boards and commissions. Number 6A, executive session personnel matter.
Chair, I would move to approve 6B through E.
I think on E, we got to pick some names on E.
Well, the ones that are not.
Right, we have-
The personnel matter.
Right. I think we need to wait, we need, we need to vote on that one, we come back, from executive session.
Okay, B, well, can we move B, C, and D?
I think we could move C and D.
We could do that. B, C.
And E, there are, there are five people for four spots.
We could do B and C.
B, C, B and C?
Yes, sir.
B and C.
Second.
Can we do B, C?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For B and C, thank you. All right, do I hear a motion, that we move to executive session?
Talk about an executive session.
Is there a second?
For what?
Reverend Middleton, thank you. There's an executive, executive session necessary to discuss a personnel matter related to the appointments listed on the agenda.
Is that so moved, are you good with it?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you, we'll be, everyone vote in favor.
Aye.
Yes, let's go to executive session. We'll be right back. Hold on. Take one. Please.
That's a hammer. It's a little cool.[264.14]
At the executive session to discuss a personnel matter, no votes were made and no action was taken during the executive session.
Thank you.
The next item to discuss is the resilience and sustainability advisory committee. There's one appointment. Did we do that one?
We did B and C.
We did B and C.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did B. I'm sorry. We did B and C. I'm sorry.
So number 6D, Board of Zoning Appeals, appointment.
There's only one, so, right?
Yes, sir.
So that's Mr. Kabrowski's appointment.
Yes.
So, you know, I move that we support his appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or a second? Larry, you have a second?
I'll second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is E, Berkeley Charleston Dorchester Council of Governments appointments. There are four appointments available and five individuals. There are four incumbents.
Chairman, I'd move to approve the four incumbents.
Second. Is there any other, any other motions?
Honeycutt, would you call the names out for me, please? I think it's Reed, Massey, Askew, and Williams.
Yes, sir. That's right.
Okay, all right. Hearing no further discussion, we'll have a vote on the four. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, certainly the attendance, I think we should have a conversation, maybe, if we're going to reappoint individuals. I appreciate, you know, the information being sent out relative to the attendance of the individuals, you know, who are the incumbents. And if it seems as though in their previous service, they were not able to go, for whatever reason, I don't know why, then that may be something that we should think about. Because if they're not going to go, just to continue to reappoint them, just to have their names on there, where another person potentially could be more active.
Chair, the question, if I wanted to vote for four people, but one of them is not in this Honeycutt's motion, do I move to offer that?
To be moved forward, to be voted on.
You nominate him.
I nominate him. Yes, sir. Well, I would like to nominate Lacy, Massey, Reed, and Williams.
So I'd like to.
All five is out, so we just take a vote.
Second on that? I'll second that. So all five are nominated. Let's have a vote for all, for four. Ms. Salisbury, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. So each person, when I call your name, you call out the four individuals you'd like to vote for. Mr. Boykin?
Lacy, Massey, Reed, and Williams.
Mr. Darby?
Would you come back to me, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Honeycutt?
Reed, Massey, Williams, Lacy.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Please come back to me, too, in a second. I want to...
Mr. Middleton?
Lacy, Massey, Reed, Williams.
Mr. Moody?
Massey, Reed, Williams, Askew.
Mr. Pryor?
Williams, Reed, Massey, and Askew.
Mr. Werman is absent. Mr. Darby?
I'll go with Askew, Massey, Reed.
You have one more. Are you only voting for three?
Lacy.
Okay. And Mr. Kabrowski?
I'll say Lacy, Reed, Askew, and Massey.
And Mr. Sass?
Massey, Reed, Williams, and Askew.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So Massey, Reed, and Williams, and then there's a tie between Askew and Lacy. One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five. So typical, I was going to say.
Three would advance, and we'd vote on...
I got different numbers. Yeah, I got different numbers.
Do you have different numbers? Okay.
Can we just let everybody do that all over again, so we can...
Okay, sure. Mr. Boykin?
Lacy, Massey, Reed, Williams.
Mr. Darby?
Askew, Massey, Reed, Lacy.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Askew, Massey, Reed, Williams.
Okay, Mr. Middleton?
Lacy, Massey, Reed, Williams.
Mr. Moody?
Massey, Reed, Williams, Askew.
Mr. Pryor?
Williams, Reed, Massey, and Askew.
Mr. Werman is absent. Mr. Darby?
I'll go with Askew, Massey, Reed.
You have one more. Are you only voting for three?
Lacy.
Okay. And Mr. Kabrowski?
I'll say Lacy, Reed, Askew, and Massey.
And Mr. Sass?
Massey, Reed, Williams, and Askew.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So Massey, Reed, and Williams, and then there's a tie between Askew and Lacy. One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five. So typical, I was going to say.
Three would advance, and we'd vote on...
I got different numbers. Yeah, I got different numbers.
Do you have different numbers? Okay.
Can we just let everybody do that all over again, so we can...
Okay, sure. Mr. Boykin?
Lacy, Massey, Reed, Williams.
Mr. Darby?
Askew, Massey, Reed, Lacy.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Reed, Massey, Williams, Lacy.
Okay. Mr. Kabrowski?
Askew, Massey, Reed, and Lacy.
Okay. Mr. Middleton?
Lacy, Massey, Reed, Williams.
Mr. Moody?
Like a song. Lacy, Massey, Askew, Williams. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hold on. Williams, Reed, Massey, Askew. Sorry about that.
Okay, that's what I had for you the first time. Okay, Mr. Pryor?
Williams, Reed, Massey, and Askew.
And Mr. Sass?
Massey, Reed, Williams, and Askew.
Okay, so then that makes one, two, three, four, five for Askew, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight for Massey, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight for Reed, one, two, three, four, five, six for Williams, and one, two, three, four, five for Lacy.
Still tied.
Yeah, I'm confused myself.
I've got six for Askew and four for Lacy. One, two, three, four, five. So I had Mr. Darby, Mr. Kabrowski, Mr. Moody, Mr. Pryor, and Mr. Sass voting for Askew. That's five. So I didn't have Mr. Boykin.
I thought Mrs. Honeycutt.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
I ended up voting for Lacy.
All right, well, it's coming before us on Tuesday.
So what we would typically do is send them all, definitely nominate the three high vote-getters, and then have y'all vote among the two low vote-getters on Tuesday, when we'll have Mr. Werman here, who might be able to break the vote.
Good point.
So the first, the first three goes through?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we only, to break the tie, it would be the difference on Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Here, we can do that. Okay. Ms. Honeycutt, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Williams, who's here. Are any of the other nominees here tonight?
I'm a Massey.
Hi. Thank you all so much for being here tonight.
This must be Mr. Lacy behind that.
All right, is there, we're here for council comments. Reverend Middleton?
Thursday night, or are we saving that for Tuesday?
All right, well, this is coming for...
No, be more liberal, sir. Give him the chance to talk. No, sir, don't hit that gal with your head, sir.
Because I saw them.
No, I have nothing to say.
Sorry.
Mr. Moody?
Just say Happy New Year again, just to aggravate the administrator.
Thank you. Mr. Darby?
Ditto.
Thank you. It's an honor to serve each and every one of you, and got a chance to meet and talk, and I respect the deliverers, the fashion and fairness and integrity of everybody here, and it's an honor to be with everybody, and thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, there's something I do need to say, sir. I need someone to really meticulously teach Mr. Kabrowski that we don't raise our hands, head county council, and we don't stand up in the executive session, sir.
It's a learning curve. Thank you. Mr. Pryor?
Mr. Moody, you're not going to be here Tuesday, are you?
I'm not. I forgot about that. Sorry about that. Thank you for remembering my vacation, Mr. Pryor.
So this may go, well, we'll see how it goes on Tuesday, but you might be the tie that is...
Might still be tied.
You come back.
Mr. Boykin?
I just want to say how much I appreciate the heartfelt welcoming and support and patience of staff and the other council members for us newbies, and so looking forward to what this year brings. Thank you.
Ms. Honeycutt?
Nothing.
Mr. Administrator?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Hamm?
No, sir. Happy New Year.
Bill. I'd like, I'd like to thank you. I'd also like to thank everybody that's willing to serve. It's a big thing to serve and to give your time to your county and to your citizens, and so I really appreciate that, everybody who's willing to do that, and I'd encourage more people to do it if they get the opportunity. Thank you all. Oh, I'm sorry. One thing, I forgot. Is Durant back?
Well, I wanted to welcome Luella.
That's the best thing that happened tonight.
I'm going to go with Jim Hoss.